Good morning, everyone. The June sixteen twenty twenty-three work session of the mayor board of office is now called for order. Basically, our agenda, the first item is a presentation by Kevin Stafford and Neil Sheppard, providing results for the South Montgomery traffic study. Mr. Sheppard, Mr. Stafford, the four years.
Well, good morning. How are y'all? I believe it's a pretty, yeah, party up there. And I'm giving you all my flip notes in the background because y'all have worked with me before. You know, I go a little fast sometimes between taking notes and trying to remember what in the world did he say again. I'll give you this for follow-up. But first off, thank y'all for having me in. We had a meeting in here a couple of weeks ago to go over some of our preliminary recommendations to the planning study for South Montgomery. And so what that's going to give, and I'm going to leave the rest of these here for now. What this is going to give you, though, what this is and is not, y'all remember about a year ago, we finished off your regional transportation plan that was coordinated with MSU and October High County and yourselves. And South Montgomery was part of that. We recommended looking at some additional roadways and the east-west connector through South Farm. Recommended some third lane indoors, some center turn lanes down the southern end of South Montgomery, south of Academy. That would be beneficial. Talked about a roundabout at Academy that might be beneficial. Talked about looking at some signalization changes that might be beneficial. And so what this planning study is, is a deeper dive on some of those recommendations. It's not a full look at South Montgomery. For instance, we gave recommendations to physically make on Highway twelve or around Highway twelve north and south of that intersection of South Montgomery. So we didn't relook at those things. The three main things this was going to look at was the east-west corridor to go through South Farm and whether that's a feasibility y'all should look at going forward. Looked a little deeper dive into the roundabout and the benefits and how that looked shaping up long-term for you. And then looked at really from the signalization from Academy up to Locksley. And looked at those three signals, Lynn being in the middle, and what things, lane assignments, signalization timings, what things were beneficial to you there. So that's kind of what I'm going to talk on today. I'm going to go as quick as I can to get through it. So with that, we have a full report that we're going to give to you with these recommendations. There's some short-term and long-term, high-cost and low-cost items. So there's a little bit of everything in that. So with that, I will say that my colleague here, Case Fulcher, that's over against the wall, he's the brains of this. Y'all know me better than that. So I know, you already said it today. But with that, Case is here in Starkville, actually teaches on campus as well. Traffic transportation, that's his thing. And so I give him all of the credit for the things you see in here. And so here, again, are just the three objectives I've just talked through. So next slide, please. The first is the east-west connector. So what we did here is there's two main property owners, as y'all know, the Ramsey family and then MSU that owns property through the South Farm. So next slide. What we did is we looked at the different routes to go through the farm and also sat down with the Ramsey family to see what their benefits were, their requests were, going through that. Neither were showstoppers, if you will, but they all had requests, as you can imagine. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. But we did pick five routes. There was only really one route or two routes through the Ramsey property, the southern end and the northern end. I know that property may develop at some point in time. But through MSU's property, there were five routes we saw as feasible. David Howell, who is a gem to deal with, said, hey, let me go to the different colleges that represent these areas on the South Farm. Let me get you some pros and cons for these routes. He did that, provided us a document, three pages worth of every route, the con for every route, and really, routes four and five, next slide, please, are the two that they really chose that were best for them. So you can see the one, two, three, four, five routes here, north being up. This is the Ramsey property here. This is Blackjack. This is Stone up in this area, but obviously the southern end of Stone, and then, of course, Hill State that comes around. Four is the route through that would, you could go back to that slide, I think, I quit touching it, I know it does that. The other, one ties into Hill State, the other ties into Blackjack. So next slide, please. With that, if y'all recall, when I first came back to you, what we did is we took the combination of the traffic data that we've had in the past, that was done during COVID era for the overall study, and we updated that. So we brought it into what traffic you're seeing now, since we're finally out of the COVID side of things. But we also took, used Republic HQ, which is cellphone data. And we took the origination to the destination info that comes out of that, synthesized it with the actual traffic data, and it tells us where people are going inside of those numbers. And what we found is the east-west corridor only takes about ten percent of the traffic off of South Montgomery. Takes about forty percent off of Locksley. Now, with that, y'all's growth rate on South Montgomery and in the city in general was looked at about one point six percent. And so what that tells you, at a ten percent reduction on South Montgomery, is in seven years, your traffic volumes that are an issue today are going to be right back where they are. And so it's a one point five mile, next slide, please, it's a one point five mile stretch that for a seven-year benefit, we just don't see the return on investment in going through that. Here is just a real quick delay reduction that you'll see. In blue is if you did nothing, obviously, if you were to build the road, these are the reduction in time delays at these intersections along South Montgomery. So is it a benefit? Yes. But is it worth the investment? We don't think so. Next slide. This kind of touches on some of the cons that came out of what we looked at for all the routes. Again, besides the three-page document that we received from MSU, y'all now have that for the file for all the routes. We looked at the combination of you would have two new signals, one at Shadowwood, which was coming through the Ramsey property, and then you may have one at Blackjack. And we're concerned about the spacing of where Locksley and Stone are with Blackjack, a new signal coming in there. And then if you come into Hill State, yeah, that's just a net cost. Do you have any questions?
The only, you're speaking about coming off of South Montgomery somewhere on the Ramsey property, just after Mr. Sanders had.
Correct.
All your other options are code than that, to split somewhere between Blackjack and Hill State?
Correct.
Your only option is the Ramsey property?
And for what we looked at, for where we are, correct. And of course, it also introduces to Sherwood Forest, new traffic to that. We looked at possibly taking it through there and just, this was the lowest hanging fruit to take a road through, right, for connection. So, and so, of course, now we'll get into all the details, but you'll have on here between the traffic congestion that it would bring to the parking area over at the Y Center and the reduction of parking availability to introduce noise and congestion that you would bring to the neighborhood area, and of course, to the South Farm as well, where they have a lot of research going on. So for all those reasons, besides the cost of the road and all the other amenities that have to come with such a signals, for a seven-year benefit, we just didn't see it. So, next slide. So next, we looked at kind of reviewing the overall operation from Academy up to Locksley. Next slide, please. Some of the things we looked at and our recommendations that we're making, and again, going back to the money, looking at the east-west corridor and the benefits of South Montgomery versus, we think your money is better spent on South Montgomery. Before I get into this, we did also look at an east-west connection over to Lewisville, and that's even less of a benefit than through MSU. So just know we did look at that, just for the sake, it only reduced traffic by two percent. So again, within less than a year and a half, you'd see that back to it. So it's a normal traffic condition you see today. So first off, what we saw when you're going northbound on South Montgomery, get to Locksley, we'd recommend replacing that head, putting in a right turn green, so that when westbound Locksley is turning that double left turn, you'll also have people going right on red who are a little bit slower right now, give them a green automatically. So as the mayor said, when we were first talking about, well, people should be going right on red anyhow, yeah, but that time delay from stopping and then having to restart, we're recommending to replace that signal head, to put in a solid green when that left, that westbound left turn on Locksley's going. Also, to update some of your clearance times, they currently didn't meet MUTCD standards as a minor recommendation. If y'all are curious, for those who can be flexible in the morning and afternoon when you travel, your peak times are seven fifteen to eight fifteen in the morning for this stretch. That was pretty consistent through all the intersections, whereas the afternoon peak changed just a little bit from about four thirty to six. And so for those that can adjust their travel schedules, that's one way to help your condition there. So, but we did look at optimized timings. We think that's y'all's best low-hanging fruit right now, because all of your cabinets, all of your controllers are already set up to run what we call time-of-day operations. And so we can give you those timings to adjust. Right now, y'all are on a free operation, which is the same timing set all day, every day. And so we feel like if y'all could adjust those time-of-day operations for these peak hours, that will help your flow overall. And then most, all areas experience the decrease in the delays when you do that. And then the only one I'll mention, I'll come back to this here in a minute, is eastbound Lynn Lane. This study goes through twenty forty-five, and the eastbound does fail in twenty forty-five, even with the optimization. So we have some recommendations there to improve that as well. So, next slide. Coordinated timings, if y'all can, a lot of people like to say, well, we want to be able to see the signals all change at the same time to move us through all at one time. Shouldn't that help us? In this case, it does not, because you have such a strong side flow coming from the other three streets. For instance, Locksley's side flow is so much stronger than Academy and Lynn, that if you made them and coordinated them all at the same time, you've all of a sudden hurt Lynn and Academy and actually put those levels of services in a much worse state, whereas your optimized timings were much, much better. So we won't go through all of this, I'll just say that we did look at it, and in the report, we do talk about the benefits and the negative impacts it has if you were to coordinate those timings through that stretch. Next slide. Lane modifications. This is one, going back to, I mentioned Lynn Lane, your eastbound movement. It does fail with your traffic progression in twenty forty-five. One thing we would look at is using y'all's existing footprint, reassigning lanes both on South Montgomery and on your eastbound for Lynn Lane. So next slide, I'll show you kind of what that looks like. Right now, y'all have three lanes. We would propose that you would turn, once you get, back, back out a little bit, the Nottingham, once you get past Nottingham, keep in your existing turn lanes as it is there, but once you get past going to two northbound, so that when you come out of Lynn, you have two northbound and a dedicated left. So that adds a lane going north, gives you more queue space. But once you add that double northbound lane, you can also have a double left turn now out of lane. So picture what you have at Locksley, now you've gone into Lynn as well. That helps that eastbound movement with that. You need to get rid of your island that you have there now, and it would adjust your pedestrian crossing just a hair there, but you could still have a right turn, it just wouldn't be a dedicated right turn like you have right now on your eastbound at Lynn. So this is alternate number one. This is the one that gives you the most benefit that we've looked at. Next slide shows you the next alternate. Really, here, in both recommendations, we always recommend keeping this double northbound lane in place. Here, you just replace your island, it gives you a little bit better protection for your pedestrian to meet code. You can see it kind of mimics the island on the other side, but you only have that one left bound. Next slide's going to show you, though, the benefit between the two, A and, I mean, one and two, they're both viable, but again, because of the future for Lynn, you can see alternate one give you your better reduction. And it's a pretty huge reduction. You can see you go from a vehicle delay of sixty seconds, a minute, in other words, all the way down to ten seconds, just by doing that. So while you can, the optimized signals help everywhere, this will also help your volume on Lynn going forward. And again, all you've done is re-stripe your street in these cases. So again, a low-cost benefit that'll help Lynn Lane. So next slide. Finally, I've talked about the roundabout on Academy. Your favorite, right? And so, next slide. The things we looked at here, combination of what benefit does it have to the intersection from a time delay, from a level of service delay, and then also, does it need to have what I call a slip lane or a bypass lane? Well, basically, long story short, it has a huge benefit. Next slide, kind of shows you the reduction, a ninety-three percent reduction in delay because of, or using a roundabout at that intersection. Now, the bypass lanes are a much bigger footprint, and I know that's a tight intersection. So our recommendation is to go without the bypass lanes, because you still see the benefit. And the bypass lane, if you picture, if you're southbound on South Montgomery and you're wanting to go on Academy, for instance, go westbound, the bypass lane would keep you from going through the roundabout, and you just bypass it, in other words. Again, you can imagine that footprint. Because of the volume that's there, we don't see any negative impact by not having the bypass lane. So avoid the cost, avoid the footprint, and the roundabout still has a huge benefit there. Next slide. And this is basically, just says what I just said. Next slide, please. There are a few other things we saw, again, low-hanging fruit, just things to look at as y'all move forward. Next slide. Some in your overlays, a lot of the exits or entrances onto and into subdivisions had some buildup that probably would timing to be remedied. Next slide. There were some sight distance issues with signage that could be fixed over time, that would increase safety in pulling out onto the South Montgomery. And some places, this goes in a little more detail of what those are. Next slide. There are some pedestrian timings right now that are not timed appropriately for what it takes to cross the intersection. These would only go into place if a pedestrian is there pushing the button. So these would not impact the signal every time, all the time, only when a pedestrian is there and actually pushes the button. But these are some recommendations and timings we would suggest that you make to accommodate that user. So, next slide. And then finally, recommendations. So in summary, the east-west route is not beneficial. Next slide, the short-term benefits, the signal optimization, which I talked about, the northbound right turn at Locksley that will be at the same time as the westbound left turn, constructing the alternate one at Lynn Lane, which is again, just re-striping in that area. And then in the long term, constructing the roundabout at Academy. And then, while we didn't get into it, it was in the regional report, but doing the third lane indoor left turns further south of Academy as different neighborhoods develop out. So for instance, Adelaide, since we were involved with that one, once it reaches phase six, it's recommended that those center left turn lanes and D cell lanes are put into place. And so we recommend as that continues to develop out south of there, that those combinations be made by those developers as well. So, so again, those are some of the short-term, long-term, and even the bad news, but also you can say now for the east-west quarter, you looked at it, you discussed it with MSU and the landowners, we know what's there and what it's not. So, next slide. What we're going to do next, we've already spoken a little bit, we'll start with utilities and getting with them on optimizing the time of day for the signals through there, since we already know it's already ready to go. And then we're going to finalize the report and get with Cody and his team and talk about how some of these improvements can be filtered in at their time, y'all's time, when you get ready. But basically, just be here to answer questions as they arise, as you move forward. But again, so this wasn't an overall study of everything and all things, it was the main things that came out of the regional, with a little bit deeper dive into those recommendations. So with that, as fast as quick as I can go, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Stafford, thank you. At this time, does any member of the board have any question, Mr. Stafford? General, all around.
Okay. Yes, sir. Appreciate the work, and the data answers a lot of questions. I know I have my biases, I don't like roundabouts, and I thought the east-west was the way they go across Shadowwood, but the data speaks for itself. So we need to share this with the public, in case, I know you did most of the work.
All of it.
All of it. I also want to thank the board, I know you have priorities in your own boards, and you get this cost of money. Appreciate you supporting us, thank you.
Oh, buddy, sure.
And I'd like to say, to that end, these seem to be like really cost-effective solutions and immediate impact solutions, this year, and I appreciate that.
Absolutely. They're there for the taking, right?
Any other questions for board members? Just tell me one, go ahead. Thank you. From the Ramsey family, y'all are doing discussions or anything, or this is more of a name talk, or this, that's something they, obviously, they know about it, right?
Right. They're aware of, you know, they have future plans, hopeful plans for that property. So things such as detention pines will be increasing the impervious footprint by running a road through there, and they see a benefit with that road being able to develop off of it. So we talked about where that would make most sense to put. And if we did this where maybe jointly, we could have a detention pine on that property. So that's the level of discussion we got into. But again, they're kind of a tail wagging the dog, if you can't come through MSU's property, and it doesn't make sense for y'all to construct and the rest of it to move forward.
About what was a mile and a half?
Right.
I figured you were talking about total road through, just.
Nowadays, with an open two-lane road, again, you know, if you want to accommodate all users bike-competitive, if you want to have, obviously, street lighting, you're going to have drainage that's going to go through this area as well, you could look as much as four million dollars a mile. So outside the low end, six million dollars to build this road, and that hadn't factored into any land costs that may come into it or other amenities you'd want to put with it. So it's just one of those, I know there's a sewer line through there that needs to be accommodated, future for Starkville Utilities, there was discussion about, again, some sidewalk aspects of it. But you could easily see upwards, six million plus to go from there. Simple two-lane, two-lane road.
I just like you coming about the centile, centile half to seventy years' turnover investment, but we've all, you know, and you know, half the government been discussed about fourteen years. So if you look at turnover investment, they go, no return, no investment, so one of those would be on anything. I don't know, one of those, something has to be done at some point, and then I would see explosive growth, construction, looking at the highway development law and the other neighborhoods that are coming up, you know, something has to be done.
Yeah, I think there's going to come a time, especially if commercial continues to develop further south, people are going to start going south and use a poorhouse and coming up Hill State. It's just going to be a matter of time that the level of service, once you get to Academy, maybe, if you don't do some of these improvements, we'll get so bad, people will just find a different route. That's just nature in general. So I think that's also why the long-term planning for poorhouse and all the development law on poorhouse, and of course, Hill State's there will eventually become more in use. And I think the university, I know the university's making investments to connect both Artesia Road and Bulldog Way to Hill State as well. So I think that all that area down there will continue to grow. And people will start to use it more.
Thank you. I'm going to say your advice.
I wanted to just to tag on to Ben's point, Fisher, I understood what you were saying earlier, is that while the east-west option isn't an opportunity, it doesn't provide as much relief as these other.
Correct.
Options that you presented to us. And we certainly could reevaluate once some of those are implemented to see.
That's right. Yeah, I think one of the things that first came out of this discussion, when we were trying to scope it, was nobody had had the true conversation with the university of, is this even an option that's on the table? And so now and always, we have the option, we have in writing from them why it's not an option for them in certain cases. So, but they were very cooperative, I can't stress that enough. Nobody said no, they said, well, let's just see what we can make happen.
General, recognition again. Well, just last thing, you were talking about a bypass lane on the roundabout of South Montgomery, or Academy of South Montgomery, that's such a tight intersection, is that even, you may be lost me on that, but is that even feasible with the amount of space that you have that have a bypass?
To buy a house.
Roundabout, I can't consider full bypass roundabout.
Um, over by the gas station, the shell, it's, it does not have bypass lanes, though. So that's just a regular roundabout. That's right, that's a regular roundabout.
Does your footprint of that fit?
Correct. It would. We provided that in the regional plan, I can provide that to y'all. But we looked at it from a bypass, from an operational standpoint, the bypass lanes, that is, and you would have to buy some properties, some private properties, some houses that you would want to avoid. We feel like there's a way to fit within the, not necessarily the right of way that you own, fire station's on the corner, which helps your situation, right? So there's some ways you could design that roundabout to function with a much lesser impact on, impact on private property and still give you benefit. So we just didn't see the benefit of the bypass line. But yes, it would be a landhog that would get you more into a private property acquisition perspective that I don't think is worth a lot.
If there are no further questions, Mr. Stafford, we thank you for your fine work and your great presentation. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll get y'all final report and a summary of all our recommendations. Go for it. Thank y'all.
Yes, I think we're good, we can, thank you. The next item on our agenda for the work session discussion, the agenda items for the June twenty twenty-three meeting of the board of office of the city of Starkville, going down the agenda from before to the board, all the minutes and part in the turn, are they ready?
Yes.
Any objection, consent?
Consent.
Those willing to consent, please. Down to public hearings, Mr. Allen, the first one, who sent the materials about construction of townhouse on guess, I know the planning zone commission just met, I think, on Tuesday and animal approval on the, I think, on northern side of Guest Street, off of Star Road.
Yes, they recommended approval unanimously.
Yes, sir. And it was a public hearing, so we got a public hearing, got it. Okay, and the next item on the three oh six South Jackson Street for the accessory development, a lot of things, planning, just.
They recommended unanimously for approval, too.
Got a public hearing on that, so we can go. Second public hearing for men's unified development code.
Yes, there were very minor additions to that. We did add minor additions to the stuff that was previously in it. There was some sections that were added. It was mainly dealing with code enforcement, the actual way that it's administered, and I think that was it, what did Cody, you didn't have any additions?
One very moderate, clear addition, that was just completion of a word.
And because of the added items, we also started advertising for a third public hearing for consideration, and that would be on July fifth. So this is just a second public hearing, no consideration.
Very good. Mr. Allen, thank you very much. Mr. Attorney, the board has been briefed on this at some point in the past about the lease agreement with the Den Camp Real Estate on Axon Way at Centristation University Drive. This is the first of this county, the city of Starkville, briefly, just on the board, just a quick summary of it.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, this is a lease agreement with the camp, so to add outside seating over just off of Backerson Way, right in that corner, it's unused property. The board already approved going forward with them, we worked with their council and put an agreement together. It's a ten-year agreement with a, no, it's a fifteen-year agreement with a ten-year option at their request. They've put a lot of money into adding that seating, and we're going to put a sidewall alongside there as well, and it's, we're ready to go.
Right, with the ten-year option in, near the end of the ten-year option, there can be automatically a additional five-year option.
Correct.
Yes, sir. Any objection to consent?
Is there a right adjustment?
There is, yes.
And right adjustment, the exact options are new for the ten-year, then the board can negotiate up to nine and six amount.
That's correct.
You know, initial lease amount, right?
That's correct.
Any objection to consent? Okay, the next item here on community development and planning department consideration of reporting that through a Green'sburg Street in the Green'sburg historic district.
Yes, this was a previously approved idol from several years back. They ran into some issues and it couldn't construct, but all the construction is being done in the rear of the property and nothing in the front is being affected. And that was unanimously approved by the historic preservation commission.
Any objection to consent? Consent. Engineering, sir, I'm first item approved, the utilization of twenty twenty-three street improvement project under issued fund, sand, road, soil, cement, and D V S T role improvement project. Any objection to consent?
Consent.
Consent for the item. Number two, on engineering consideration, approve the engineering department to urbanize for the twenty twenty-three source, cement, and D V S T role, clean improvement project. Any objection to consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Item three, consideration of Neil Schaefer as the preferred consultant to black professional engineering, design source for the OME roadway improvements project, and authorization for the mayor to negotiate and execute engineering consultant contract, any objection to consent?
Consent.
Consent for consideration of travel and transport, Stephen Hackman, to attend PSMJ project manager boot camp in Nashville, Tennessee. Any consent for that item, no objection? Number five, change order to increase contracts on by $8,540.70 to Hill SPK landscape for the Quonshon Boulevard.
What is that for?
Well, that's an additional amount for Quonshon Boulevard for some needed services for roadway clearance, mush, obfuscation, and other related matters. Any objection to consent on that? Item number six, consideration of approving the proposal amendment from at William's Gym for additional services or electrical material act related to the highway on the Gilroy project. Consent. Okay. All right. We'll pass the claims, knock it, and we'll see how consent. On a budget share with, if you show the acceptance of the May 2023 financial, any objection?
Consent.
Okay. Consideration of budget to adjust for 50, 23.
I'm, um, review what Lisa and I had to put together. It's all regulation, review, and it's in terms of 29 items, typical, hopefully, not the last one, but it was issued, is it?
No, just goes, it's.
Nothing really.
Consent.
Okay. Five items on new resources. First one is to hire Kate McKenna as police officer, police department, consent.
Consent.
Two, request authorization to hire Lexi Henderson as student attorney city police officer.
Consent.
Consent for that. Three, authorization to hire Nicholas Hollis as intern for Starkville Police Department.
Consent.
Consent for that. Four, request authorization to hire Jacob Mitchell as Supreme's law and section in Starkville Utility Department.
Consent.
Consent for that. Five, authorization to hire Stephanie Walker as resident should drive sensitive annual search department.
Consent.
Consent for that. Information Technology, one, request approval, yearly contract for Microsoft Office 365 from Nixel.
Consent.
Consent for that. Two, request approval, yearly renewal of antivirus software from Nixel for $9,019.
Consent.
Okay, consent. Parts, item one, consideration to approve the purchase of $14,000 for $50 pressure on lid from trench in or out, the law's fault.
Consent.
Let's get consent for that. Okay. Number two, request approval to accept withdrawal bid award to Uline on July 5, 22, and award the purchase of two ADA metal picnic tables and 10 metal picnic tables in the amount of $14,100 from Uline, the law to fault.
Consent.
Consent for that. Number one, A, on the police department, request approval for Officer Alexandra Nash to assist the National Institute of Standards and Technology NIH table drone training held by law enforcement, Drone Association, LEDA from June 20 through June 23, 2023, Nashville, Tennessee, to assist with aerial test method validation for NIH table calls to be reversed by Drone Systems. Any objection for consent?
Consent.
Consent for that one. B, request approval for CPL Matthew Asker, Officer Som, Sominesses, and Officer Cowe to attend utility ink hard camera installation and training courses to be held July 11, 223 at the GPS, oh, logistics supply and co-fax to Louisiana.
Consent.
Consent for that. And finally, on our work session of the matter today, is utilities, request authorization to approve agreement with Barbara for evaluation of urgency, general place for order treatment type variation system in the amount of $27,500.
Consent.
Consent for that. That concludes the session of the night. The next item on the agenda for the work session, is that this meeting, this work session now stands as a joint. Everyone have a great, rest of the day, and a great weekend. Don't take too much.